Grace, wisdom, and peace as we continue to embark in the business of the city. Pray these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you Vice President Barr. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 9, 2020 study session of LaVonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 2005th regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, September 21, 2020. We have all members of the council with us this evening. I don't believe that we have any special groups in the audience. I do not have any announcements to make this evening, and I will open the council as the announcements they would like to make. Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. I forgot to mention earlier, I wanted to give a shout out to my brother who is starting 7th grade at Frost Elementary. Frost Middle School, where myself and my other younger brothers have gone. It's four generations that are going through Frost. So I know they're starting school a little bit different this year. And it's virtual right now, but I'm looking forward to the stories and what Frost Middle School is like for you, Johnny. So have a good year.
Thank you, Councilmember Donovan. Anyone else? All right, Councilmember Toy. You need to unmute. You need to unmute.
You don't get along real well, Madam Chair. I'd like to remind the council member and his family that I am a Frost Phantom, 7th, 8th, and 9th grade. Thank you. And I did taxes, by the way.
Very good. Just more pride for everyone who's.
It is. It's very prideful.
Phantom family.
Phantom family, yes.
If no one else has any comments, then we will begin with the, we'll move ahead. Tonight's meeting is a study meeting. There are no votes taken. The council will, however, offer either one resolution or combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include denying or a resolution referring an item to a committee or a city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting on Monday, September 21, 2020, where they will officially be voted. If you'd like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please use the raise hand button. If you're joining us by Zoom, or press star nine on your phone if you're just joining us by phone. When that item is called, then you will be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial followed by, initial presentation followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. When you're called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record, so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for the meeting. It will also let the city council and those who are watching, joining us on Zoom, to also know who is speaking to them. I will, before we go on to new business, I will ask if anyone would like to communicate with the council during this time of audience communication. And I will go to caller with the phone number ending in 5689. Good evening.
Yes, hello. Thank you. This is Lisa. And Lisa, I just, I do recognize, I'm sure that these meetings do run long, and this is a, you know, study meeting. It is a, you know, basically an hour, 25, 30 minutes behind schedule. And it does, there are a lot of people that do have to get up very early in the morning. So maybe something could be done in the future to have more timing allowed for these meetings to be started on time, or the other calls ended on time, because that is a huge inconvenience. And then it always seems that the agenda item that we are, have been for the last several meetings has been the very last agenda item. And I would like to see some of those continuous ones, you know, moved around so that one time their first, you know, second last, instead of always last.
Thank you for your comments. So just a couple of things. The meeting does start on time, as is indicated in all the publications for the meetings. The meetings start at eight or, you know, following the conclusion of the regular meeting. And the rules of the regular meeting set aside half an hour for audience communication at the beginning of the meeting. And anyone who does not have an opportunity to address the council at the first, the first half hour, is permitted to address the council at the end of the regular meeting. And we go on, we stay as long as that takes. And items are put on the agenda in the order in which they come in. So I apologize for the inconvenience. We feel your pain. So I'm sorry about that, but these things are set by ordinance, and we don't have the ability, especially midstream during the year, to change the schedule. So I'm sorry about that, and I apologize for inconvenience, but thank you for your comment. All right, we will begin with new business. Item number one is a request to waive sidewalk requirement. This comes to us from Scott Morgan for Sauvage Homes, for the home to be constructed at 29614 Greenland. And I think we have Mr. Morgan with us this evening. Good evening, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, good evening, council. Scott Morgan, representing Sauvage Homes. And this is regarding three properties that we have that we are requesting a sidewalk waiver for. That's 29614 Greenland, 29648 Greenland, which is right next to, next door to that, the first one. There are no sidewalks on Greenland between Henry Rough and Middle Belt in that area. It's more of a rural setting. And then we're requesting a sidewalk waiver regarding that, because there's nothing to connect it to.
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Barr, Vice President Barr.
I just want to give Mr. Morgan the good pleasure of hearing me lead the charge to say that I think this sidewalk waiver makes sense, and I'll offer an approving for consent if there's, if there's no objection.
All right, I see no, I see no objections. Anyone object going on the consent? Yes, Councilmember Toy, and please, please unmute yourself. Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like it on the regular, please. All those.
Okay. All right, next is a request to waive the sidewalk requirement. This two comes from, this two comes to us from Scott Morgans from Sauvage Homes, for the home to be constructed at 29648 Greenland.
Madam President.
Yes.
Right next door, I'll offer an approving for this.
Okay. Any discussion? Councilwoman Toy, Councilmember.
On the regular, Madam Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Barr didn't offer it for the consent. He just offered it for, I believe.
I'm just offering the regular.
Yeah, that's fine. Item number three is a request, the sidewalk requirement also coming to us from Scott Morgan from Sauvage Homes, for the home to be constructed at 14950 Greenland.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
It's not that I don't want to hear from Mr. Morgan. I'm just trying to save him some time. I think this is the same scenario as the previous two. I'd offer an approving for this as well.
All right, on the regular, thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item number four. This is an award of bid. This comes to us from the Department of Information Systems for the data center HVAC replacement from budgeted funds. Good evening. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McCullough, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to say thank you.
No, thank you, but Mr. McCullough, thank you, Scott. Councilmember McCullough had his hand up, too.
Oh, I, this is, I'm just waiting for this number four.
Okay. Mr. O'Neil, would you like to speak on this issue?
Good evening. Not used to unmuting myself. This item is a replacement for our data center air conditioning units. Our current unit's over 20 years old and at the end of life. For the replacement, we selected a Liebert model that's appropriately sized for our room, and will be much more energy efficient than its predecessor. We placed this item on Mitten and received nine bids back. We chose the lowest bid from the vendor tech mechanical. They have a great deal of experience dealing with these types of units for other municipalities that have done work for the city in the past. Their bid was $42,000, which will come from budgeted funds, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
Madam President.
Donovan, McCullough, Toy, yes.
Actually, we can let Mr. McCullough go first. I know that he had previously talked about this item.
All right, Mr. McCullough.
Thanks, Councilmember Donovan. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was looking to offer an approving resolution for consent. That's okay with everyone. The bid pack is something that's much needed and of life. And looking over the bid results, the scope was tight, and this is something I'm sure that Mr. O'Neil could use yesterday, so.
All right, anyone else? Councilmember Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. I also support what Congressman McCullough said. I would just like to state that I've had the good fortune of getting a tour of the air-conditioned room that Mr. O'Neil is talking about. When I first got on council and was making my way around the basement of City Hall, I got to see some of the inner workings of the IT area, and it was quite impressive, the amount of data, the amount of machines that they have to monitor. So this seems like a great idea, and I look forward to maybe getting a tour again in the future, Mr. O'Neil would look like in the future.
All right, great. Councilmember White.
I just want to ask Casey what kind of a warranty it has.
I believe there's a five-year included with it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. If I may ask, this, this relates to the air conditioning as it relates to downstairs, correct?
It's particularly the, the computer room.
The computer room. Okay, so that computer in the future, oh, there's some changes being made in City Hall. I know there's been a concern about IT being in the basement, so to speak, or the lowest level in City Hall basement. Will there be any change? Do we know Casey at all at this point?
If, if we move the computers, the server room does not have to move. We don't have to be right next to it as we would have probably 15, 20 years ago. So we can be, we can house ourselves where we, where we can, seeing sunlight maybe.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have that on the consent agenda for the, for the meeting of September 21, 2020. Item five is a request to approve animal sheltering agreement between the city of LaVonia and the Michigan Humane Society and waive the city's bidding process. This comes to us from the Public Service Division for the period December 20, I'm sorry, January 21, 2021, to December 31, 2023, extending all terms and conditions of the current agreement. And this is addressed by Council Resolution 351-18. And Mr. Moore.
Good evening, council. It's Doug Moore with the Public Service Division. How are you all?
We're good. How are you?
Good, thank you. This, well, this went to Humane Society about two months ago to start working on the extension. It's a three-year extension from the terms and procedures from the last two years. There are no increases. There's one increase, it's minor, that has to do with litters of wildlife. But other than that, everything else was staying the same.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilmember Jolly.
I'd like to offer an approving for consent. I've reviewed this contract more than I would like in the past, and I'm happy to see that nothing is changing in terms of increasing costs, regardless of what the Consumer Price Index might say. But we all learn our lessons. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Madam President. If you don't mind, could I ask Mr. Moore a question?
Certainly.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Moore, I was looking at the packet, and it talks about the monthly fee and a few other fees. The one that caught my attention was the fee beyond 10 days would remain at $55 per day for animal. Do we normally incur that fee? I mean, is there a limit? I mean, what if an animal is there for 30 days or 100 days? Is there such a limitation there for those animals on the daily holding fee?
If there are animals that are left there, it usually has to do with a court case. And when the case goes into court, we look to recover those fees through the judgment. So very seldomly do we end up having to pick those up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. I appreciate your question.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jolly, you've offered that. Did you have something else for the consent agenda? All right, if there's, if no one else has anything, then we will move on to item number six. This is an award of contract. This two comes to us from the Public Service Division for the 2021 through 2024 calendar year requirements for the portable toilet program to provide portable toilet service from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore.
Hello again. This is for a four-year, three-year program with Brendel. They are our current contractor. We put this out for bid in early August. Due to the pandemic, our current contract with Brendel's does not allow for units with hand sanitizing possibilities. So we thought it best that we went after that, the hand, to have the hand sanitizers in each unit. And while we were doing that, we decided to update our list of needs, because over the years, it has morphed into hand washing stations and hand sanitizing units and various other things. So it was time to bid this program out. Brendel was one of two bidders, and they came in as the low bid. They have been very responsive in the 14 years that we have worked with them.
All right, thank you, council. Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Madam President. After reviewing it, Mr. Moore, you also have a backup with John sanitation, which seems like a good idea. I'd be more than happy to offer an approving for consent. There's no objections.
All right, seeing no objections, we'll put that on the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Moore, and thank you, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you.
Request to authorize appropriation of man contract with ERG. This comes from the Public Service Division to provide payment for drop-offs in August and September in the amount of $50,000 and continue funding the household hazardous waste slash electronic waste program for the year 2020 from budgeted funds. This is Council Resolution 361-19.
Good evening again, council. As you may recall, we came, the department came to you in October of 2019 with a great way to do our household hazardous waste program. We turned it into a drop-off program with ERG. At the time, we had budgeted $125,000. And then in March, as everybody knows, the pandemic hit and people started cleaning everything out. And because of that, we've run out of money, and we would like to have funds for two months, which would cover September and, or our August and September's bills. And we will, excuse me, we will, the program will end on October 2 for this calendar year. And then moving forward, we have decided to put a limit on it from May 1st to Octo, well, the first part of March to the first part of October each year.
All right, council.
Madam President.
Vice President Barr.
I just have a few questions for Mr. Moore. Doug, the cost for this, is it, is our cost based on the number of drop-offs or the amount of material?
It's based on the number of drop-off. It's, it's based on drop-offs, but it's up to 100 pounds. So if a resident goes in and has 105 pounds of material, we pay the first 100 pounds, and then the resident has to pay for the extra five pounds at a set rate. And I don't recall, I think it's 75 cents or a dollar a pound, something like that.
So, so if that's the case, does it really save us money to close down for the winter months? And doesn't that just kind of push the drop-offs off, or, I don't know if you have any data on that?
Well, to leave it open-ended right now, we, we picked $125,000 originally, because that was our cost for the two-day drop-off event. And heading into this first year of the program, we didn't have a clear idea of how things were going to work. And then unfortunately, when the pandemic hit, everybody started cleaning, which initiated a whole new set of problems. So we weren't sure, that just threw a, threw a wrench into a plan that we had, didn't really have a good grasp on anyway, because we weren't sure how many people would take advantage of the program.
Okay, that makes sense. The second question I have, and by the way, I appreciate, I think you guys have been innovative in looking at this, and I know you're gonna relook at it for next year. I think that's great. What if, what, when we pause the program, what alternatives do residents have? Do they have any other alternatives, or do they just need to wait till the spring when we restart it?
They can continue to go to ERG and pay the fee themselves, or they can wait until we get going again in March. The other thing that the pandemic canceled this year was the Wayne County drop-offs. Their, Wayne County usually had four events through the year. And because of the pandemic, they weren't doing those events, which created even more issues for us, because those also helped siphon off some of the materials that would be dropped off at, at our event.
Okay. And then I noted that this money is coming from the refuse recycling village. I'm assuming by the fact that you're asking for it, that we've confirmed that we have plenty of cushion in there to absorb this?
Yes, we do.
Okay, yeah, and the reason for my questioning is I was just thinking through, you know, from a cost saving perspective, if it made sense to actually just pause the program now. But considering the fact that we have the money for that purpose available, and that's where it's coming from, I think it makes sense to, to do this, understanding that we'll have more experience to base next year's decisions off of. So I'd offer an approving for this, for consent, if there's no objection.
Well, thank you for that. And one more thing I'd like to add. This Saturday, we have our paper shredding and tire recycling day at the DPW yard from 8 to 12. So this, or 8 to 1, so this kind of runs hand in hand with household hazardous waste.
Great.
All right, we have an offer on consent. I see that Councilmember White has a comment.
I just want to follow up with Mr. Barr's question to talk about residents who want to drop off times that aren't in, within our designated timeframe. And you said that they would just drop it off with ERG and pay a fee. So does that mean that they would pay for every pound then? So let's say they have 20 pounds, they pay a dollar a pound then? There's no, 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 no payment other than what the resident would pay, right?
Correct. In the off months, the resident would be responsible for the fee to ERG.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought. And it's still that designate, same designated amount, a dollar per pound or whatever?
Yeah, it is, and I don't recall that amount offhand.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, but you're okay, Councilmember White? Was it being on consent?
I am.
Okay, all right, so that's on the consent agenda. All right, item number eight. This is a request to adjust water and sewer consumption rates, industrial surcharge rate, and industrial waste control charges. This comes from the Public Service Division to become effective on October 1, 2020. Mr. Moore.
Hi there. Oh, no, it's, this is County Cumpler, Chief Cumpler.
Hi, Connie.
Hi. First time talking on these meetings, so.
I guess that this would be you, right? Because.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, but I, I'm not alone. Tom Hritz, another accountant with the city, and Jacob Rushlow will be speaking as well today regarding our proposed rate increase effective 10/1. I, I don't have a whole lot to say here. I'm gonna let Tom and Jacob speak mostly, but you will know in your packets, we are proposing a slight increase for the low, average, and high users with about a 2% increase overall for the average user. There are many variables that go into establishing a water rate, and this really is my first year participating in this process. So I really took on the role of reviewing the methodology and the inputs. And Tom Hritz jumped in, and he prepared the work papers, the many work papers that are involved with this. And the reason for that is, is Tom was involved with, heavily with this process in the past. He was water accountant for many years. He transitioned when I transitioned. So it made sense this year, given the year that we've had, to rely on his experience and his expertise. So with that, I think it makes more sense for him to present today with Jacob, and I'm gonna let him do that now, and Tom can take over, so, there you go.
And that's why, that's why I saw Mr. Hritz in the office just a few minutes ago.
That is correct.
All right, good evening.
Hello, everyone. As Connie said, we are proposing a increase this year of 2.2% for the average user. We classify the average user as about 20 units per quarter, or about 15,000 gallons. And the increase for the average user will be about $3.80 per quarter, or $15.20 annually. And for the average user, that still will, we're got to about less than $2 a day for purchasing water in the city of LaVonia. Overall, the increase in water and sewer rates over the past two years for all users is at least or less than 3% combined increase. In the rates, we have what we call fixed costs, which are on cost that are incurred by GLWI, Great Lakes Water Authority, and Wayne County, the Rouge Valleys. Those costs, those fixed costs, before we sell any water, total $24.1 million. So when we're doing our calculations, we have those figures in place, along with, which we have our anticipated water sales for the year. And then we come up with our rates that we propose for the year. And including in the rates as well, the city of LaVonia has heard the, the small, the small meter charge, which is meters from 5 inches to 1 inch is, we're not gonna be asking for any increase of those. Those costs are still gonna be $69.75 per quarter. And that amount hasn't changed in the past five years. It's been, it's been the same. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna pass on to Jacob. He can talk about some of the things that's going on in his department.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Jacob Rushlow is Superintendent of Public Service. So, you know, in water rates, obviously, a big part of that is water and sewer operations that we do in the Department of Public Works and the Public Service Division to keep those systems operating and delivering clean, safe drinking water and taking sewage away from homes and delivering it to the wastewater treatment facilities where it gets treated and discharged back out to the rivers and lakes around us. So out of that fixed fee cost, things that we consider annually when we're working with the Finance Department on this are our non-banded, non-funded capital costs for equipment, tools, vehicles, things like that, as well as capital improvement projects like our drinking water revolving fund loan project that we're doing down in Section 34 this year, which is about seven and a half miles of water main replacement. Other projects like sewer repairs, water repairs, foot and drain disconnection program that we've been doing over the last couple of years. So all those go into, you know, calculating our costs into that portion of the fixed fee. One thing I wanted to mention, too, that we've been really doing a great job in the department, I like to say, is changing out and updating meters to our new system with the automatic reads that increase and create efficiencies in, in how we can read and how frequently we can read the water meters. So as of this past July, we are at about 45% of the system now that has been switched over to those automatic meter reads, which is about 17,000 customers that are on that system. So if you look at, and we always like to look at a comparison of, you know, how does LaVonia really compare to other communities around us? And we continue to be one of the lowest among the communities whose rates that we were able to obtain. Looking at the average user and the small user, we're the second lowest among those neighboring communities. Looking at the average user and the small user, we're the second lowest among those neighboring communities. And for the largest users, we're the lowest of any of the surrounding communities in that regard. So always a good thing to know that our water rates are kept as low as possible for the service and the water that we deliver and provide to our residents. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have on this rate package.
Councilmember Toy.
Go unmute, Laura.
Unmute, unmute. Councilmember Toy, unmute.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for the lack of a muting tonight. I just, no, I'd like to know, when was the last time we didn't have a water increase, a rate increase? I'm sorry, this is a pet peeve of mine, these water increases, as many of you know. And I also want to know about the administration fee, if we're gonna get rid of that. Because we instituted that several years ago when I was on council, and we were told that might be taken off at some point. And I have many residents asking me, why am I charged this administrative fee on top of what I'm paid for the water and sewer? So I just wonder if there were any plans, or if you guys have taken a look at that. While we have low water rates, so to speak, we also have these other kinds of cost adds on.
Well, they're not really costs that are added on. I think what you're talking about is the flat rate fee, is that what you're talking about?
The 60-some dollars?
Yeah, so that fee is built into the rate. That fee actually, basically, if you think of it, is just like, even before you even bill or use one unit of water, we have all of these expenses just to even be connected to the system. And we have to continue to maintain that system regardless of whether you use that water or not. So that's one of the reasons that is built in there. That fee also helps smooth out our rates, so we do not have large fluctuations from year to year. Prior to that rate, you would see, you could see fluctuations going up and down at large increases. And so that flat rate helps smooth, because there are many variables that go into building or establishing water rate. So as I look at this data here that I have in front of me, the last decrease was in 2013. And, you know, overall, one thing you want to note is that for the last three years, our increase overall has been less than, well, it's been less than 4% for, in the last three years, and less than 3% in the last two years. So you're not even looking at an overall increase of 3% for those users. So to answer your question, when that fee is gonna go away, I don't have any answer to that. Again, this is my first year looking at these rates, but I don't, I see this as actually benefiting more users than it is not, so.
Madam, I may continue. And I still have a floor, yes, okay. Well, I understand, and we buy our water from Detroit, correct? And they set the rates as well, correct?
We buy our water from GLWA?
Yeah, the authority, which they derive it from. Where's the water plant at? Let's get down to that bit.
I'm sorry?
City of Detroit, correct?
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Waroff, good evening.
Hi.
I thought I had the floor, Madam Chair.
I think maybe, if you're okay, I think Mr. Waroff wanted to address maybe the question that you had asked previously.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's correct. Good evening, everyone. Don Waroff, DPW Director. When you were referring to the admin fee, I believe you were talking about the fixed fee, correct? Just for clarification before I get going.
Yeah, I believe so, Don. It was done, oh geez, at least 10 years ago now, I'm gonna guess, maybe.
Eight, yeah, eight to 10 would be correct, when we had, we totally changed over the rate structure.
Right.
And part of the reason for that fixed fee, going back to maybe educate some of the newer councilpeople and refresh memories, that is actually, that fixed fee was part of the logic of how we were being billed from Detroit at the time. There was a 60-40 split on fixed fees compared to consumption. It's really more of a ready-to-serv type of fee that's there. In the same sense that you pay for cable, whether you turn it on or not, you go back to those meetings where we reference that. That is the reason that we put that in there. And at one point, I think over the first two or three years, we did adjust that around, and we actually lowered it down to a certain number where it currently sits for the last five years. So that was the logic behind there. And if you remember back at that time, there was a lot of discussion about, I can't remember the firm that was going around, but they were starting to sue all of the cities, making sure that the way that these customers are being billed through the communities are the same way that we were being billed from DWSD at the time and GLWA currently. So that's, that's part of the reason for that fixed fee and the way that it is. And the breakdown has not changed on the way that we've been getting billed for that. So that's staying the same, you know, and being consistent in what we're doing and how we're being billed. And then the other part of your question, if you remember, and I believe Connie mentioned that over the last three years in total, we've seen like a 3% increase. Last year was like a 0.5, like a half a percent increase. That is an increase. You know, in the big picture, it's pretty flat, almost zero for last year. So I just wanted to make that point. And I'll let you ask your second question, and I'm sure we can answer where the plan is, if that's where you're going.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Waroff. He's absolutely, I appreciate your comments. You do add that history and good memory, Don. It's true. What I get, Don and others, is a lot of, and maybe you do too, I don't know. But usually after the summer, you get a lot of residents calling you saying, what the heck is going on? You know what I mean, as far as my water? Well, number one, they're consuming, and usually watering their grass more, or using more water in the summer months, and it was extremely hot this year. So that's also what I wanted to bring out. And I appreciate you giving that history on that, and the indulgence from the chair as well and others. But it is a little sensitive issue, because for years, we were paying, kept paying higher and higher rates and rate increases all the time to pay for Kwame's jail time and other things like that, honestly. So, you know, I mean, if you study the issue, there was a lot of kinds of things going on in the water. Governor Snyder came in and put the authority together, and it has somewhat improved. So I really appreciate the department's work on this, and I thank you very much for explaining it. And that way, anyone listening at home, or listening to Zoom even, can understand it a bit better. Thank you very much.
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President Barr.
Yeah, I just, Connie and Don, you both done a good job of explaining it. But I wanted to add, before I ask a couple of questions. I recall, you didn't tell me if I'm mildly wrong, but I remember asking this question in a previous year. If we truly broke down our water rates by what is fixed costs and what is operating cost, or the cost of actually delivering the water, that fixed rate would be a lot higher than what it is. So I actually think that we're doing our residents, at least those that are, that don't like the fixed rate, I think we're actually doing them a favor having it where it's at. And it certainly helps to, in all the ways that Connie and Don have explained. I, you know, use the cable example. I'll use what I think is even more pertinent example, just because we all depend on water. It's like your fire department. Most of us have never used it. But thank goodness, we pay the tax dollars to make it available. So the two questions I had, and I'm gonna apologize in advance, it's been a long night. And during that long explanation at the beginning, this may have been covered. If it has, just answer it quickly. I don't want to make you repeat too much. But can you just explain for us why, why the reduced water sales this year hurt us? And if this is just a pass through, can you help me, can you just elaborate on that a little bit? When I say hurt us, I just mean contribute to the rate increase.
Well, the reason that is, is what I do is, I take basically a three-year average of our water sales. Okay, so, and based upon that, that calculation, we're anticipating a decrease of about 2.5% of our water sales. But in terms of that, so we're also experiencing a 5.5% increase from our wholesaler, Great Lakes Water Authority.
That part I get.
So in terms of making up that difference, so by the decrease of the water rate, I mean, our decrease in sales, I believe it was like a $550,000 reduction in revenue because of those sales, because we're not selling as much. So in order to make that difference up, you know, if you're not selling as many items, you gotta sell.
Okay.
Increase the costs.
Sure. Well, makes sense. The other question I had, and again, apologies if you already answered this, but with these new rates taking effect in October and going through next June, is that typical for us to do this for less than a 12-month period?
No, no, it's not. You know, this year was a little different. The Great Lakes Water Authority Board of Directors had decided, you know, due to financial constraints with the COVID pandemic and businesses shut down and everything else, that they had pushed that normal rate increase, which would occur, you know, July 1, push that off until October 1. So that's why we're coming to, you know, this time of year, which is very much not a typical, normal procedure that we would go through typically. It's July 1 to June 30.
Okay, I appreciate you answering all the questions. I, I'm happy to offer an approving. I shouldn't say happy. I'm never happy to offer the approving on this, but I understand it. And I, and I do appreciate the fact that La Bona continues to really lead the pack as far as keeping these increases as low as possible. And when we're talking 2% or less, I mean, we're really talking about less than the rate of inflation. So appreciate all the efforts on that. I'll offer an approving. I would also request, though, that all the figures, all the factors that you went through tonight, it'd be really great if we could get on, I'd love to see on paper just the list of the different components that go into the increase and what, you know, where the different things that contribute to an increase and the different places that we've saved, you know, whether that's just in a sequential bar chart or whatever. I'd love to just see that laid out on paper, if you wouldn't mind sending that over sometime over the next couple of weeks. Sure. Thanks.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd all appreciate seeing that. Thanks, Scott. McCullough and Donovanick.
Thank you, Madam President. Through the chair, to, I guess, anyone that could maybe have helped me answer. It's pertaining to, do we have any future capital projects or anything, or looking into any kind of a water tower to save any funds? You know, I know that, you know, I know enough to make me dangerous, but, you know, I know a lot of times the ROI is fairly minimal. And, you know, obviously, you can get a better rate by filling those towers overnight. You guys got anything down the pipeline?
I can address that.
Go ahead, Don.
We'll tag team it, I guess. That's fine. We, a few years ago, we actually went through the process of doing a study on a water tower and what that would entail, and, you know, the whole process of where it would be located. And we have multiple districts within the water system. So trying to target the right districts, and again, you're spot on when you're talking about filling it at night and getting off of the peak hours and reducing the volumes that we're taking water in at that time. That study showed to be about a $15 million capital investment at the time. And if I recall correctly, I want to say it was a six- or seven-year ROI. So that return was gonna take six or seven years. So we kind of sat down and had some internal meetings on that and what that meant, the impact to the water rates and the long-term, you know, paybacks that that would eventually bring to us. The one big question, and at the time when we were looking at this, as you know, I'm a co-chair and being at a lot of those meetings with GLWA and a bunch of the consultants at the time, was, our big question mark was, what are we going to do? That ROI stays where it's at, that's perfect. But if the rate structure and how we're billed changes, that totally blows up the ROI. And now are we out $15 million and doing what we're doing? So at the time, there was enough discussion going on in regards to how and potentially rates may change, and how they were talking about tweaking and changing some of that. As you know, it's no big secret, GLWA is looking at mothballing one of the plants. So that, that in itself is a numerous discussion point of, you know, changing distance and elevation and some of the things that go into the rate charges. So we did look at that. We still have that study. There's been talk again about, you know, looking at that type of stuff again. That's kind of rekindled here lately. So I think there will be more coming in that area, that we probably will be talking more about that. And again, as long as the rate structure stays the way that it is, then, you know, you get through that point of that ROI, then I think everything's fine. It's just the making that commitment to jump into that and do that. Hopefully, that answered your question.
It did. Thank you. And honestly, you know, that is something that obviously, an ROI of five or six years, that's, that's quick. So, yeah, I definitely think that's a cool thing to maybe take another look at. Thank you.
All right, Donovanick and then Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Back to Councilwoman Toy's earlier comments, I genuinely understand what she's saying about this being a sensitive topic. I understand it's just a small percentage, but we've taken consideration, electrical companies and gas companies increase their rates 2% or 3% a year each year. And the list goes on of your bills increasing each year. So that 2% or 3% here becomes 20%, 30% a year collectively. So, but at the same time, we do have costs that we as a city are incurring. We have to balance our books as well. So it's a sensitive topic in general. But I do have a question. Forgive me if I missed it in the packet. In terms of the lost revenue of the sum of $550,000, is that normal? Can we explain why we're experiencing such a loss in revenue?
Yeah, I can, I can answer some of that, Tom. I think, you know, one thing that we've seen, and it's really not even, you know, just in our area, in the region, even in the state, it's a nationwide trend. We're seeing a decrease in water usage. I think it's a couple of factors. It's increased efficiency of fixtures, and it's change of habit. People are becoming more conscious and aware of water conservation across the board. And it's really driven down, and not just on residential, but on the commercial and especially the industrial side as well, and how they're using processed water, which are some of our biggest users, obviously, are industrial users, and becoming more efficient in what they do to lower their own costs, which, you know, you can't fault them for doing. But in doing so, you know, we're seeing a trend across, you know, the region and the country about decreased use of water on an annual basis every year over year since about 2011, 10. It's just been a decrease across the board.
Thank you, Mr. Rushlow. So, go ahead, sorry.
I was gonna say, I'd just like to add a note, which is.
Don, you wanna be, the problem is, I can't see, I can't see who wants to speak, because you guys are, so I can't, I'm having a hard time. I'm having a hard time giving the floor where it should be given, because I can't see Jacob or Don. So, you know, if you could raise your hand or do something to indicate, because I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to sort this all out and give everyone their opportunity to speak without cutting anyone off. So, Don, go ahead, please.
Okay, hold on to my hand. Thank you. Appreciate that. I just wanted to add, for this year, with the pandemic that was coming, I was actually one of the people who actually thought, man, we're gonna, we're really gonna knock our sales out of the park this year. Everybody's gonna be home. They're gonna be using more water. What is the first thing they're telling people to do is wash their hands more. I was grossly mistaken with that optimism, because in the same sense that everyone was home, it was also all, some of our largest water users were backing down production, not using water, which obviously is a bigger driving force in our water consumption than everybody being home and washing their hands and/or watering their lungs. So as it started to level itself back out, that's how we actually ended up, you know, a little over that half a million dollar loss in revenue from where we are. And every year, as Tom explained, it's a three-year average that we found that works the best of seeing. of seeing where we're at on the graph if we're going down, which we've been going down for the last 10 years, and just trying to stay caught up with that. So when you're projecting your revenues and, and you're trying to do that, you know, that, that's the problem that you run into. But just wanted to throw that out there as, to answer part of your question for this year, part of that problem.
Thank you so much, I appreciate both of your answers.
If, if anyone would like to, um, if, if anyone would like to act on this, I, I really feel that we could benefit from a water rates 101. And I've been through this a lot and, uh, I, every time I take myself through it, I learn. So if anybody wanted to put this into committee and, and it would essentially be an education session, but because this is something we vote on every year, we can't do it as an informal, we, we can't do it as just an informal education, uh, session. I'm Mr. Barr, Vice President.
I'd be happy to put that in committee. We did it a couple of years ago and it was really helpful and we've got some new members and, and I'm not just gonna pin it on the new members, I, I wouldn't mind the refresher either. So, um, I think, um, I don't have my committees in front of me, the infrastructure committee, uh, whatever that is. Somebody know?
Yeah, that's, uh, let's see, I'm working right now.
Is that yours, Jim?
Is that, um?
Okay, whatever the infrastructure committee that Jim chairs is.
Capital Outlay, Capital Outlay and Infrastructure, right? That's Kathy, those together.
Oh, that's, okay. Yeah, that's probably the appropriate place for it, so.
So we could, so would you like to put that on? Would you like to, uh, have that on the agenda for the next regular meeting?
Yeah, we'll do that. And I'll offer that for consent if there's no objection.
All right. Okay. Anything else on this? Did, did we, do we have a, do we have a motion on this? I don't think we have a.
I offer an approving.
I'm sorry. And, and I think that, that we should put that on the regular.
Agreed.
All right, anything else? Very good discussion and, uh, thank you, uh, uh, finance team and, um, and, and DPW team, uh, very, very helpful comments and a lot of good explanation. All right, uh, new business. Item number nine is a vacating request. This comes to us from the engineering division to vacate a public utility easement located within the Holiday Inn located at 17117 and 17123 North Boro Park Drive. Partial ID numbers 46-028-99-006 and 008 and 046,
Thank you, Madam President.
You're up.
Just a housekeeping issue, as you know, Holiday Inn was built a couple of years ago on there at Newburgh, north of Six Mile, and we're just trying to do, uh, clean up on the 20-foot easement that was recorded back in 1988. Uh, they are looking to develop the south, uh, portion of that, uh, development in near future. We just want to let you know, group 10 had asked for, uh, vacation, just giving this to, uh, city council for, uh, their review to go to planning commission and let it circumvent its course to come back hopefully, uh, with no issues. Thank you.
Council?
Madam President?
Yes?
I'll offer approving for consent, if there's no objection.
Any objections?
Ma- Madam Chair?
Uh, yes, Mr. London.
I think we had to send it to the planning commission for their review and then it, then it'll come back to us, let them run its course, right, Mark?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, but we can still send it right to planning commission on the consent and then it comes back, uh, got it, thank you. All right, item 10, request for one-year extension of waiver use approval. This comes to us from a planning commission regarding petition 2019-04-02-05 submitted by Piano Shoe Properties LLC, which previously received approval by the city council on July 8, 2019 to utilize a microbrewer license, including redeveloping the site, expanding the parking lot and modifying the exterior facade of the existing building in connection with the operation of a brew pub located on the south side of Seven Mile Road between Exeter Road and Harrison Avenue, 27717 and 27719 Seven Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 12. And this was, um, council resolution 243-19. Mr. Teromena?
Yeah, I think this is, uh, fairly straightforward. As you recall, uh, the council approved, uh, a little over a year ago, uh, a microbrewery operation and restaurant, uh, located at, uh, the southeast corner of Gearing and Seven Mile Roads. For reasons that are explained in the letter provided to you, uh, the petitioner is requesting a one-year extension. And I'll note that the only modification is a, is a, a name change. Uh, the entity that will be securing the liquor license will, is, uh, Copper Smith Brewing. And, uh, the petitioner has, uh, requested that we reflect that in the, in the approving resolution, which the planning commission has done as part of its recommendation to council.
Madam Chair? Yes, uh, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you so much, I'll offer, I'll offer an approving on that.
All right, run consent.
If it's fine with the rest of council, that's fine.
Anyone else have any objections?
Madam President? No, no objection, I just think it's worth acknowledging, I saw Mr. Schumacher on, uh.
I just saw that, thank you.
Oh, but, and, and you can let him speak, that's fine. But I just wanted to thank him and anybody else that's still here for these other things. I know they've been here a long time and glad they're still sticking with these projects and, uh, thanks for their patience tonight.
Uh, Mr. Schumacher.
Is that me?
Sorry, I had you on mute and then I don't know what happened.
Hi, how's the audio?
Good, we've got you.
Thanks for recognizing me, Madam President. Yes, we are planning on continuing rather soon. Just a single point of order in the resolution I received from the planning commission in section one, it just also states Copper Smith Brewery LLC. Just want to make sure that we change that to Copper Smith Brewing LLC, which is the official name.
All right, so noted.
Otherwise, no statements, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Okay, that's on, uh, consent. And, uh, moving on, item number 11 is a request for one-year extension of waiver use approval. This comes to us from the planning regarding petition 2019-05-2-08 submitted by Livonia Healthcare Real Estate, which previously received approval by the city council on August 26, 2019, to demolish, to demolish the existing nursing home, St. Jude, building in its place for the purpose of operating a nursing and physical rehabilitation facility mission point Livonia on the north side of Ann Arbor Trail between Joy and Stark Road, 34350 Ann Arbor Trail in the southeast quarter of Section 33. This is council resolution 294-19.
Thank you, uh, this too is a request for a one-year extension. In this case, it involves the, uh, former St. Jude Nursing Facility located on, uh, Ann Arbor Trail and, uh, between Joy and Stark Roads. Uh, you'll recall, we spent quite a lot of time reviewing not only the development of this property, but there was a time when, uh, they were going to relocate the facility to, uh, other sites nearby. But at the, in the end, uh, the redevelopment of this property was approved. Uh, nothing has occurred on the site other than, uh, the, the residents have, uh, have been moved to, to new facilities. There are, uh, still unpaid property taxes associated with the, uh, with the site, uh, as well as, um, unpaid water and sewer charges. The planning commission, uh, reviewed this, uh, is recommending approval with the, um, with the conditions that were added, uh, by council in their, in your resolution 29419, uh, which requires that all taxes due and payable regarding the subject real personal property be paid in full prior to the issuance of any building or demolition permit in connection with the waiver use approval. And that would also include the, uh, unpaid water and sewer charges. Thank you.
I have new information on this. That, this is dated, uh, this is dated, let's see, September 3rd, indicating that the real property taxes were paid on 8/21. For July, the, the real property tax for July 1st, 2020 were paid. However, the real property taxes for summer and winter 2019 were not paid to the city and were turned over to Wayne County. All right, let me see. And then there's a letter, um, there's a letter, um, I, I'm sorry, there's a, trying to follow this. There's a letter to, uh, to Scott Miller and our planning commission, a- also referencing the bankruptcy process with St. Jude, a- and just underscoring that the taxes for 2019 are still not paid as well as the many years that are part of several bankruptcy filings. So the total amount due for real property taxes is 403, 500, 403, 598, $39. So, I just wanted to get the numbers and all the facts out there. Uh, Councilmember Toy.
Hey, Madam Chair, there's a petitioner on the line at all from St. Jude. I know this was a heavy, heavy discussion.
Uh, yes, I think Mr. Malli is on and let's see, I'm trying to unmute Mr. Malli.
Uh, good evening. They have some new answers.
Good, good evening, Madam President, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, um, uh, uh, thank you, uh, uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, I think as Mr. Teromena described, this is for a one-year extension. And, um, just to give some background, this is real, uh, all related to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have obtained, as you know, back through the, the city council, we obtained, uh, I'm sorry, the planning commission, the council approval for the redevelopment of the site. You're also able to, to obtain the, uh, certificate of need from the Department of Health and Human Services and the, um, licensing approval from the, uh, Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. Um, along with that, we also went, uh, I should say, the, the prior owner of the property went through bankruptcy process, which was approved by the bankruptcy court. Unfortunately, um, in the midst of this development with a pandemic hit, um, from a skilled nursing perspective, we completely stopped development. Um, so as of March, uh, there really has been no progress on this. And that was really just a function of being able to move forward with the development, both from a third party engaging the contractors' construction and then of course, everything that we were doing from an operational perspective of what was going on in the facilities. Um, as of June of this year, so over the last, uh, really, you know, 60, 60, 70 days, we've been fully engaged in this project again. The engineer, the construction team have been fully engaged, the lenders are back engaged. So we would like to move forward with the project. Um, we have in the, um, you know, during this period when we've been re-engaging the city of Livonia, have also reached out and gotten extensions from the state of Michigan on the certificate of need and from licensing and regulatory affairs on the building program. Um, with respect to the taxes, um, that, that is correct, that there are, um, delinquent taxes due. Um, and I, 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 that amount sounds right, I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but as a condition of the development, not only with the city of Livonia, but also as part of buying this property and the licenses out of the bankruptcy, it requires payment in full of the $400,000 in taxes as well as some other payments to other, you know, creditors of the bankrupt estate. So that condition is the same condition and it, it's, it hasn't changed and, and we have no deviation from the plan. As we go through this development, when the funds come in to do the construction, those, that mortgage loan will also be funding the payment of these taxes. And as I, as I just mentioned, and, you know, other creditors who are interested in the bankruptcy estate. Um, so I think that condition is the same, um, really, the only, you know, you know, there's really, there's no change to the project, there's no change to the property. There's no change to the, to the payment to the, to the creditors or the waterfall. It really is just a timing, um, issue right now and being able to, um, you know, have sufficient time to get this project going again.
All right, I also see that our city treasurer, Mrs. Linda Scheel is on the line and we'd like to, uh, give her the floor, I'd like to give her the floor. Good evening. Good evening, Treasurer Scheel.
Thank you, Madam President, thank you, council members. Um, I just want to bring up the fact that the last time this was approved was in August of 2019. And I believe at that time that the, um, developers had stated that 2019 property taxes would be paid on time and they could be paid to the city of Livonia up until the end of February of 2020. And that was prior to the pandemic. So I have a huge concern regarding the taxes on this development. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, 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 I just don't know if those figures are there, Ms. Scheel. And if, if there is a requirement under the plan to pay those, I mean, certainly we will. I, I, I just don't have that, um, I, I just didn't know that there was anything out there from August 2019. I know that the, the taxes that came due, I believe the summer taxes, um, uh, for, for this year were paid and I think all the water and sewer charges are paid.
Yeah, the, the current taxes are paid, Mr. Malli, but many back taxes are not paid. And I think you just heard me read the figure, read the figure, it's like a total of four, over $453,000, I believe it's still owed.
Madam President?
I, yes, Vice President Barr.
Do we have a motion on this?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna, as, as is laid out in the letter to us, I, I share the treasurer's concerns. Uh, we, we have here that, you know, the city attorney and the treasurer, you know, would recommend the council approve, conditioned upon all steps being followed as stipulated, and that all 2019 and any future taxes are paid timely to the city of Livonia treasurer prior to being turned over to the Wayne County treasurer. Um, I would offer that resolution.
All right.
For consent, if there's no objection.
Um, I think that, uh, Ms. Scheel would like to speak again, just a minute, uh, Mr. Donavick. Linda?
No, I'm good with that, thank you.
Okay. All right, so back to, um, Donavick and then Toy.
Thank you, Madam President, if I may, to the petitioner.
Yes.
Um, hello, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Um, plain English, when do you guys expect to pay the back property taxes on this development? Or on this, this property?
Uh, right now, we are looking, we are targeting a closing date of November 15th for the construction loan and the acquisition of the property. Um, so we, the petitioner, Livonia Healthcare Real Estate, will be buying the real estate property um, at the same time as closing on the construction loan. We have already acquired the licenses and the right into the skilled nursing beds. And if we can, um, that, that would be, like I said, that would be our best-case scenario is November 15th.
So, uh, sir, if you do not get this funding, does that mean that the past due property taxes will still be non-paid?
If, uh, it, 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 yes, in plain English, if we were not able to syndicate the deal and to get the lender to come in, which, which again, I, we don't think is gonna happen, everybody's engaged. We, you know, the lender's fully engaged, the investors, everybody's, you know, on the project. But, um, that, that would be the case, we would not be closing on the property, um, if we, if we were not able to close on the loan.
I just struggle with this myself. I, I don't understand why property taxes are not being paid on, on projects. But thank you, uh, sir, for your answers.
And, and council member, I would just add to that, I think, I think that's where it is. So we, we were not the owners of this property. We did take over the property, um, you know, for the purposes of closing it down and then acquiring the licenses, but a lot of the past due property taxes, in fact, you know, almost all of them predate, you know, our involvement with this particular project. So, so I am not the owner of the, of St. Jude Nursing Center.
Okay. All right, Mr. Barr has offered a resolution. And, uh, for the consent agenda, Mr. Barr?
Yes, there's no objection.
Yep, all right, uh, Councilmember Toy.
You know, Madam Chair, uh, in all due respect, um, Mr. Malli, um, and I realize you're not the owner, but if I, if I remember your name correctly, you know, and not seeing your face at the moment, we went through a whole lot on this subject matter, I believe it was last year, council, correct me if I'm wrong. The ups and downs, the twists and everything else. And I realize and I empathize with you on selling your building, tearing it down, whatever they're gonna do, but, you know, the city's got obligations with our dollars too. And as I think, Mr., um, uh, you know, as, as Mr. Dominant pointed out, we've got to start collecting on this, otherwise this shouldn't even be on the agenda, quite frankly. And we should wait till November. It's just, it's not good business after a while. I'm sorry, but, you know, I gotta pay my taxes and sometimes I don't like to do it in my business as well, but, you know, it's for the benefit of our community and our treasures. correct. I mean, she's gone round and round on this. And, you know, we, we need you to at least make some good efforts to write a check for some of it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. All right, moving on, we will go to item number 12. This is a vacating position. This comes us from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2020-07-3-03 submitted by Stonefield Engineering Design on behalf of Hagerty Square LLC and Hagerty Residential LLC to determine whether or not to vacate a section of his existing public utility easement located on the east side of Hagerty Road between Seven Mile and Eight Mile Roads, 1900 and 19750 Hagerty Road in southwest quarter of section 6.
Excuse me, Mr. Terramino.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry.
This is an item that you reviewed previously and it's, it's more or less a technical oversight. Had we discovered this sooner, we would have taken care of it at the time. This project was approved Hagerty Center. There's an easement that runs along the north side of the property that's affecting the ability to complete the project, really just the garages in connection with the residential portion of the development. There's a 40, that 43-foot easement is being reduced down to 20 feet. 20 feet is, is sufficient to allow DTE to maintain their wires. The rest of it is not needed for any public utility purposes, but is necessary for the construction of those garages. So planning commission is recommending approval of the easement vacation. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll offer the approving on consent if there's no objection.
All right, seeing none, we will place that on the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Terramino. And now we come to the last agenda item of the evening, and this is a site plan petition. This is from the Planning Commission regarding petition 2020-07-08-05 submitted by Bellagio Home requesting developer site condominium in a manner free consisting of four single-family homes on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Merriman Road and Osmonds Avenue, 31670 Seven Mile Road in the southeast quarter of section 3. Mr. Terramino.
Thank you. And hopefully everyone can see the graphic. I think you're all familiar with this site because it, it is a property that's in the process of being rezoned from RUF to R1. Council, in fact, gave first reading to the rezoning on July 20th. Second reading and roll call are on hold pending a review of, of the site plan. The site plan is, is really what you reviewed conceptually at the time of the rezoning application was submitted. You can see it involves the continuation of Bridge Street and the development of four site condominium units, two on the north side, two on the south side. All four units would meet the minimum R1 requirements. So the plan, this is just providing more, a little more detail to the same plan you reviewed a few months back. In addition, the petitioner has submitted the master deed and bylaws, all of which are consistent with the adjacent developments in, as well as the, and that would include not only the house sizes, but also the, the minimum percentage of bricks and other design standards. For those reasons, the planning commission is recommending approval of the site plan as submitted. And if you scroll down in your packets, and I'll show these currently, these are some examples of the homes that they would propose to build on those four lots. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terramino. Counsel.
Madam President.
Yes.
I, I, like my, like earlier council meeting when we first discussed this, during our first reading, I thought this was a good idea. I understood that this was intended purpose when building this neighborhood years back. And I'd like to, I think it's a great idea.
All right, I see that we have, we just lost my screen. I see that we have attendee on the line who'd like to speak, and this attendee's last four digits of the phone number are 48. Actually, the petitioner, I think I just saw the petitioner, and generally we let the Let me see if the petitioner still wishes to address the council. No, I don't. Okay, so I will go to the attendee who has a handup. That is, last four digits, phone number of 4838.
Good evening. My name is David Mobus. I'm on 19142 Shrewsbury, which residents backs up to the proposed new homes. We've went over this at numerous council meetings and with the zoning board and the planning commission. We've submitted petitions. None of the residents want this. It's going to destroy the area, the houses are not needed. I understand that, you know, it was discussed 15 years ago to continue the street through, but nobody even owned that property 15 years ago. So I find it hard to believe that it could have been planned for that long ago. It, it's just beyond me that, you know, city council can, can approve everything when nobody in this neighborhood wants it, and we have submitted petitions to that effect. And nobody's taking that into account. I understand that you get thousands of reviews with residents complaining about things, but when all the residents are complaining, there's something wrong. And I think you need to really listen to the residents this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mobus. I will go now to the petitioner with the last four digits of 568.
Yes, this is Lisa. In addition to what David had just spoke about, I know they said that they submitted the bylaws. In the previous meetings, the petitioner has mentioned chain link fence. That is against the bylaws of both subdivision Livonia Manor 1 and 2. And it's been mentioned that the chain link fence that's there would be either replaced or added to. So I want to, I don't know if we have access to that, to be able to see those, or ask that you guys review that and see if that is, a chain link fence is allowed, because that's not allowed in our bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes.
I think that's a fair question. I don't know if the petitioner or Mark wants to speak to that. I, I have a hard time believing that we're going to be putting it, I, I know the chain link fence is there now, I have a hard time believing we'd be putting that on the new property, but what, do you guys know what she's referring to? Is there a plan to put a fence there?
The petitioner is available, so why don't we let him address that, that question or that comment? I, I will point out that while the chain link fence is, may, may, may not be something allowed under the, the building and use restrictions, it is not prohibited by ordinance. So if Mr. Suave could address the concern.
Good evening, Mr. Suave.
Good evening, counsel. How are you this evening?
Good, and how are you?
Good, good. A little later than usual, but always down for the cause. No, the chain link fence question came up, and I believe some of the adjacent residents were saying that the, the existing fence there was old, rusted, and some of it was falling down. So I offered, if the residents wanted to replace it, the old chain link fence with a new black chain link fence. We don't, we don't allow chain link fence in our subdivisions, but we're not going to put up a privacy fence because we got houses to build on both sides, and that can be up to the future homeowners. So that was what I offered, not what we're permitting, if that makes sense. Just, just the, just the greatest, just the greatest offer for the neighbors that were claiming that the fence was unsightly, rusted, and falling apart in some places, and they asked if we were going to replace the fence.
It was the existing fence that you had offered to replace, but that would go away with this new construction.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I assumed, but, okay, thanks for clarifying that.
All right. We have another participant who would like to speak, and Michael Hankard.
Yeah, I, I just want to, to see the comments that they have, that the residents in the neighborhoods are not in favor of this, and just want to see the comments that I, I think that the council really does need to look at that and address it. I know you guys already made your motion and you're moving forward, but I, I wish that you would look at, I guess, the folks that it's impacting and what their thoughts are at your decisions here. I just want to restate that.
Thank you, Mr. Hankard. Anyone else? All right, we have a pleasing resolution offered. I would suggest that we put that, that on the regular.
The vote on the rezoning will have to occur prior to that, so that.
Oh, that's right. That's right. So, so the next meeting, we would, we would have the rezoning right at the second read on the 21st, the meeting on the 21st. Correct, Mark?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? And with that, we go back to audience communication. If anyone who is in the audience would like to speak on any, on this evening's agenda, now is not. Seeing none, we will adjourn, but before we adjourn, I, I do want to thank everyone in the house who have called in and, and I probably didn't have an opportunity to respond to all the emails, but I do want you to know that your comments and your concerns have been, have been heard and listened to. We don't always agree and see things the same way, but you're, you're not ignored. And, and I, I, I don't speak for all of council, but I speak for myself, and I, I, I know that you've contacted a lot of us, but I will tell you that, that again, because we don't agree, doesn't mean that you weren't, that you weren't heard and considered. And it looks like 5689 would, we, we had moved on from this item, but I will, I will allow exception here to return if this is on item 13. 56, 5689.
Yes, this is Lisa again. I do appreciate the clarification on the fence, but that was not how it was stated previously to us. It was, it was led to believe that they would be replacing the fence and adding fence in the back for, between the previous home and the existing lots of chain link fence. So that does need clarification as to what's being allowed. And if it's left to the future homeowners, that fence that's up there, I guess, for clarification, is that being removed? That, any existing chain link fencing? Because again, then it would be up the, who's responsible for paying for that removal? Because you can't be two fences back to back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
Rico can speak up if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that it'll be removed at the, at the developer's expense when they construct these new homes. Thanks.
Is that correct?
Looks like Rico's gone, but that, that was my understanding.
All right, we will, we will get clarification. That, we'll be just voting on the agenda or on the rezoning next time, but we will have clarification on this issue before it comes through. All right, and if that's it, and we don't have anyone else who wants to address the council on anything else, then we are adjourned. Good night, Livonia. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for Force IT. Thank you for Livonia Cable and everybody else who.